Well, we went to Wally's house first.
Okay. It's being six o'clock on Monday, September 18th. I'll open the meeting of the Charter Review Committee. First name is pleasure of agents.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now I'll open the public hearing for discussion on the charter change proposals that this committee has recommended. I'd like to start off by introducing the members of this committee. Tom Ralph, Pamela Do, Andrew Jolder, Buck Craver, Ricky Henry Jurisak, Roger Boor, and Ted Avlus. Doug Willitsen is also on this committee, but he's unable to attend tonight. And I just wanted to mention that there's handouts on the table if you can. Okay. And this meeting is being televised, recorded for future broadcast, so if anybody does want to make comment, I'm just going to ask that you come up to the mic and state your name and address. Now that we got rid of that housework, we'll start review of the charter, and I'm going to go over here, take my notes with me.
We formed in April of 2016. And we simply revised, reviewed the charter, which was last approved by Legislative Act on January 7th of 2009. The charter was actually containing some remnants of things when we had a representative from government. So we worked on cleaning that up. We also worked on making some changes for best practices. We took some of the DOI recommendations from the 2007 review of the town, and we tried to put all the best aspects together and make the necessary changes to present this town resident. The, the process is going, I'm sorry about that. The process is going to be, after this public hearing, we've also, we've already requested a special town meeting, which will be on October 30th. And the warrant articles will contain the major changes that we're proposing. I believe it's six articles that will appear on the warrant. And that town meeting is a first thing. That doesn't make or break whether this passes. It's only to allow it to go to vote in May of 2018. That's where majority will decide on the changes. And the special town meeting is important because it does require a two-thirds vote to put it on the ballot for the may meeting. And so I don't want people to realize that, you know, you may like some parts, you may not like other parts, but this is just to get it to town vote. The town hasn't really worked on the charter change for decades. It's time, it's clearly time to make some changes. So we've, we've broken the changes down into four categories. And the substantive, substantive changes are what we're going to be talking about and focusing on in depth. And one of the first proposals is we're proposing to change the town collector and the town treasurer and the chief assessor from elected to appointed positions. And the reasons for doing this is so that the town will be able to attract from a larger qualified candidate pool with mandatory skill sets for our employees, subject to personnel violations, performance reviews, holding regular business hours, and are required to have and maintain certain certifications in order to remain in position. These positions have, as many as you might know, the state has made changes in policy. And it's ever-changing and requires the now-elected officials to keep up with that. And we think that it just opens up a larger room. And the local elections do not always yield the most qualified candidates, which in the end is not in the best interest of the town or the town's people. The outcome of elections often depend on candidates available to fund in for their campaign, local popularity, availability of public outreach, family history, and community. These issues hold no relevance when selecting the candidate who is able to successfully perform the responsibilities of the position, especially when the position requires delicate tasks such as ensuring the safety, responsible handling of town funds. Before I go on, we've spoken in depth with each of these now-elected officials, the town collector, treasurer, chief assessor, and they whole highly support this change. I'd like to make that clear, that we have their support. They see the need to make the change. Also, the state private revenue encourages communities to appoint municipal treasurers, tax collectors, and assessors rather than having townspeople elect them. There's been recommendations in previous reviews that the DOI would make this change. There's other reasons, but I think you get the gist of our rationale for doing this. The second substantive change is the water and sewer commission. This will be a newly created commission. And although in the present charter there is an advisory group, that group never formed, this is not a revisory commission. This is, a commission is going, if you read on, we'll get to it later, but their duties will, amongst other things, will be to review and set water and sewer rates. They'll be responsible for the financial oversight of those enterprises, and they'll oversee the stabilization funds. And the rationale is clearly with so many other matters before the board of selectmen, they can't possibly absorb, absorb the amount of responsibility required to make a sound decision. In addition, the specialized knowledge required to be able to fulfill the duties of a commission are not common. They usually recruited out of a higher level of experience in water and sewer. The finance committee is the third substantive change we're proposing. Currently in the charter, it's a committee of 15 members, five appointed by residents in elections, five appointed by the board of selectmen, and five appointed by the moderator. I am on that committee, and I know that we've never even approached 15 members. And in looking in what other committees are doing these days, we found that there's no identified reason to have such a large financial committee. The norm around the state, it will vary from five, I think there is one committee that has 20 or 21 members, one town, but the majority are at nine committee members, and we feel that that's a good size to carry out the duties and functions of the committee. The fourth change we're looking at is the board of health. We're looking at changing that from three to five elected members. We felt that it's, this is a, you know, as communities deal with new health, health issues, and it, it needs a robust committee to move these things along. And we feel that any discussion outside of the posted meetings between two members could be seen as a breach of an open meeting law. So if you have three members, two of them can't really talk without, without being informed. So there's no ability to legally discuss issues and bring forth information other than at meetings. If one abs, if one member is absent or has a conflict, it takes a unanimous decision of the rest of the board to make a decision, or the issue is left unlimbed. Also, in small community, families, friends, and potential financial interests may come before the board. If this happens to one or two members of the board, it may then have a conflict. Many towns have five-member boards to avoid these potential problems. In addition, as new regulations are adopted at the state and federal level, and businesses grow, more pressures placed upon these boards to make sound decisions to benefit the town and community. I'm going to go into detail later on how to change these committees and the compositions of these committees, but these are the major changes that we're proposing. We're going to get into the charter in a minute in the next slide, but the way it's broken down is we've broken it down into four categories and color-coded the changes throughout the charter. So the grammar and punctuation changes are highlighted in blue. The minor changes will be highlighted in, the moderate changes will be highlighted in rose, and the substantive changes will be highlighted in green. How we've laid out the slides is the left-hand column is the current charter, by section by section. The middle column is the changes that we're proposing, and the right-hand column is the proposed charter.
I apologize, but can we just go back for one minute? The board of health, didn't we, and I apologize if I'm wrong, but isn't it, we're proposing three elected and two appointed?
Yes, yes.
So it's a five-member committee?
Yes.
But three elected, two appointed by the town administrator?
Yes.
Okay.
I was going to go through that when we go through the section.
Okay. It's just a little...
Confusing.
...deceiving here because it says from three to five elected members, that's actually not the case.
Oh, okay. Good point.
Okay. Thank you.
Section one, I'm just, I'm not going to spend too much time on the grammar and punctuation and the minor changes that they did to read. If there's anything that's of particular concern or something you want to comment on, I'll need to stop at any point in time. The, again, the section one incorporation is pretty straightforward, there's just some minor punctuation. Section two, the short title, again. Section 1.3, powers of the town, section 1.2, division of the power, all minor. Section 1.5, obstruction, there's no change. 1.6, it's governmental, there's just no change. Now we're on to section two, which is the legislative range. Again, this is just some minor, you know, and not very dramatic, but a moderate change, which really is not, you know, severe evidence. Section 2.2, the presiding officer. The only change there is the appointment of a deputy moderator. Right now, during town meeting, if you can correct me, is, right now, the appointment of a deputy moderator is subject to the ratification of a town meeting, so we need to remove that so that you will just, or the moderator will just designate. It seems like a formality that has no purpose. Section 2.3, the time of the annual town meeting, again, there's minor changes. We made a minor change to section, I'm sorry, that's the next one. Section 2.4, the special town meeting. Section 2.5, town meeting warrants. We did make some minor changes. Limiting the, the information that's required to, for a warrant act presented by the town voters, or 100 voters for a special town meeting, that's not changed. Section 2.5, town meeting warrants. We made some changes to where and how they're posted, taking into effect that, you know, the, when this charter was, there wasn't the town website, you know, it's a different publication than the local newspaper. So we may make changes accordingly. 2.7, channel of powers, change. 2.8, town meeting procedures. On 2.8, see, we wanted to take the forum out of the charter, and let me explain. The charter is a pretty unchangeable document, so except when it goes through its periodic reviews, which are, ten-year, yeah, ten-year reviews. So we opted, in this and other instances, things that could change or, you know, may change as time goes on, to remove things from the charter and have them covered by bylaw. So the 61 voters is a remnant of, from the representative of the town government days. So we felt while we see no need to change it at this point in time with this development, they should probably be removed from the charter for the bylaws. 2.8, town meeting procedures. We just put a section in, that's section F, it's a new section. We just wanted to identify how the town meetings are run, and it's, town meeting time is basically the guiding principles for running a town meeting, and also as well as anything in this charter, the town bylaws and procedure rules and act like it's an operator. 2.9, referendum procedures. That's, that's a remnant from the representative of town law that we had, and we, that's been removed since then. Item three, elected officials. 3.1, general provisions. This is where we've incorporated the changes from elected to appointed. Right now, these were elected positions, the board of assessors, the town library, the town treasurer. We're proposing, we're proposing to remove that from the, from this section and move them over to an appointed section later on. And we just made a minor change in B, where it says, "No elected town official shall simultaneously hold any other elected town office." And we changed that to say, "Subject to the following limitations. No elected town official shall simultaneously hold any other elected town office. No person's name shall be printed on the ballot as a candidate for more than one town office at any time election. No elected incumbent of any board or committee shall be eligible to seek election for the same board or committee at any time other than at the expiration of their elected term." So we just expanded more on that first statement. Again, section 3.1. We just, the town clerk and town treasurer out of that section. On the general provisions, board of selectmen. We, right now, it's, it's written that a, if there's a failure to act or if a vacancy occurs in the membership of the board of selectmen, the remaining members of the board of selectmen may call a special election to fill such vacancy and shall call such special election upon the request of 200 or more voters. Oh, that's just a minor change on that. It's a different one, where we changed the numbers required, but that's not this section, so moving on. 2.1, continue. The recall of elected officials. We, we changed the recall petition, petition to any 25 voters may, I think that's a type of affidavit, a committee submit an affidavit. We changed that to 50. We feel that it takes 50 to get a candidate on the ballot, and it should at least take that many to open a petition to remove them from that position. Again, that's just minor changes. 3.1, general provisions, repeat the recall petition. Louder?
Yeah.
Just with that.
Okay.
Yep. I think it's just detailed of process.
Just repeating the process if required.
Again, this is where we inserted the appointments for the treasurer and the, the assessor and the town collector, and also appointments to the water and sewer commission. And we'll, we'll get to that, the composition of that commission later on in the charter, but these are the appointments of these, these articles passed. 3.2, any of this, it's minor. 3.3, it's minor. 3.4, school committee. I think in the effort to streamline the charter and remove things from the charter to allow more flexibility, we're electing, we're recommending to move some of these duties over from the charter to bylaw. So there'll be, the bylaw committee is formed and will be working in concert with us as time goes on so that there's a, we fill in the space so that this is a smooth transition between the charter changes and the bylaw changes. The changing from elected to appointed for the assessor, we took into account also that right now we have a three-member board of assessors, that the chief assessor is one of those members. Looking at what other towns do and what the DOI recommends, there's, there's really no need to continue with that, that makeup, so that we're recommending that the, that committee be dissolved, and again, there'll be a transition that we'll knock above, and that the chief assessor will be carrying those powers duties. Section 3.6, town clerk, changes, just minor. 3.7, town treasurer, that's one that's been eliminated. 3.8, town collector, that's been eliminated from the section. 3.9, because of the elimination, you'll see on the left it says 3.9, finance committee nine, finance committee and on the right it says three point six, finance committee. That's because we dropped some of those and just remembered. Here is where we're proposing to reduce from fifteen members to nine members. The composition will still be broken up between three authorities. Three members will be elected instead of five. Three members will be appointed by the board of selectmen instead of five and three members will be appointed by the town moderator instead of five. We've made some changes to the powers and duties. Board of library trustees, minor. Three eleven, with the house authority, minor. Three point twelve, rest of the redevelopment authority, all minor. And again, on the right, just, I keep repeating that because we eliminated some of the number and we take those from three point twelve and the current charter to three point nine when they proposed. Uh, the board of health, again, we're proposing going from a three-member elected board to a five-member board. Three of those five positions will remain elected and two of those added positions will be appointed by the town administrator. That's just numbering changes. Uh, section, article four, town administrator, section four point one, appointment, qualification and term. That's all minor on that. We, we tried to clean up some of the terminology. I think we've all heard of the interim town administrator position and temporary town administrator position. We tried to clean that up and clarify it and the thought process is, is that as long as the town administrator is in his seat, that, um, they can appoint, you know, somebody to act, um, in their absence, you know, for try, you know, notification or biting that day or, or something like that, uh, that, but mainly they oversee any, any decisions made during that time. They're responsible for it, um, no matter what. And, um, we, we also wanted to, um, speed up if there's an absence or an opening in that position, we wanted to speed up the, uh, filling that position. So we're recommending that, that a temporary appointment should not exceed three months. I, I'm sorry. We're recommending moving that.
Who's that? Sure.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I'm getting ahead of this. So four point two thousand duties is, is that much? Four point three thousand duties, again, it's, um, four point two thousand duties. We, uh, we changed the four point, uh, two, again, to put a little, um, add a little vest during, um, duties to that town administrator. To formally investigate, if you read on the right again, four point two in, formally investigate any member of any multiple member body, employee of town office, for any challenges or wrongdoing of criminal act, the board of selectmen shall be made aware of any formal investigation in writing no later than forty-eight hours after the administrator has lodged a formal investigation. The administrator may use any means available to the police department or outside consultants providing that any monetary, monetary, monetary expenditures are approved by the board of selectmen as provided in section, sort of, maybe this chapter. And again, uh, this is what I was talking about earlier, four point three, delegation of the car. The town administrator may authorize any subordinate office or employee who exercises any power or performing a function or duty which is assigned to the office of town administrator provided however that all acts belong under such delegation so that all times be the acts of the town administrator. And that's the change. Here is where we have the changes. Four point four, acting town administrator. We replaced acting town administrator with a temporary town administrator. And it so reads, "Any vacancy in the office of town administration shall be filled as soon as possible by the board of selectmen. Board shall appoint a town administrator meeting with qualifications listed in the town bylaws. Such temporary appointments shall not exceed six months' term, but additional renewals or renewals may be quoted every thirty days thereafter for a total temporary appointment of not more than one year." So, so this is where we're trying to speed up that process of, of filling that key position. We, we feel because we've gone through the process recently of, uh, picking, uh, you know, going through the hiring, uh, and appointing of a, a new town administrator, we know that it takes time and we know that the process needs to begin quickly and, uh, we feel that in, in the old charter, uh, I think the...
Ms. Chair, I believe the purpose for this is in not to, the, the timeline for, for recruiting any town administrator is filled out in the bylaws. This, this limits the, now proposing the temporary town administrator, formally acting interim whatever, to a specific period of time and does not allow that individual to serve for an indefinite period of time, um, during the whole recruitment process if, if you have to do it over again like we have to do unfortunately this last time. But it limits that individual's term as the temporary town administrator, um, but it also, I believe, does not prohibit that person from, also from, um, applying for the, the, um, the position.
Right.
The permanent position, correct. But it does limit that individual's time in that position so we don't run into what we came into last time.
And, uh, section four point five, uh, removal and suspension, uh, we, we've changed that so that the board of selectmen by a firm vote of at least four members may terminate, remove or suspend the town administrator from office provided however that the further conditions applicable to termination, removal and suspension may be addressed by the terms of any contract of the board of selectmen and the town administrator. So we've changed it from a simple majority to a four vote. Article five, administrative organization, that one is minor. Five two, change. Five three, um, we, uh, we took this out, uh, because it, it's really, uh, something Now, the, uh, that's second, five point four, how it works, again, because we took that out of the brief, you should see on the right hand side, it'll say second five point three to the second five point four. Um, but we've, uh, we've, the, the change that, that we made is the, uh, in the charter, the appointment of the director of public works. Uh, we've, the town has removed that position for no years, correct? Five point two.
It has only been maybe a handful of years that we actually did have a true D P W director.
So once our, you know, one of our goals was to have the charter reflect which was active, what's currently being done. So there's no, there's still provisions in the charter that this position could be put back in at some point in time if, if there's a need. Uh, it doesn't need to be in the charter to, to do that. So it's really insignificant, it's just getting it out of the charter, I think it Um, as you see, at five point five on the left, there was a water and sewer advisory board, never got on. We're, we're proposing, uh, again, at the five point four, water and sewer commission. So it's, it's more than an advisory purpose, as I explained before, that will be setting , um, water and sewer rates, this mission will. In the composition, there should be a water and sewer commission consisting of five members appointed by the board of selectmen for each, so that range in the term of office is needed. In addition, the superintendents of the water, in addition to this five-member board appointed by the select, uh, commission appointed by the selectmen, there'll be the superintendent of water and superintendent of the sewer classes, served by virtue of their office and shall each have a voice but no vote on this commission and shall not count towards the salary required, your honor. The town administrator may attend meetings of the water and sewer advisory, uh, as And shall, uh, so the administrator shall have a voice to vote. Again, it talks about the new ones of this commission and, um, the water and sewer commission so also set water and sewer rates after a public hearing for which at least two weeks' notice is provided by posting on the town website. So much like it's then now a, a public hearing is called when people are raised as that. Article six, finances and fiscal responsibilities, changes in six one. Minor changes, uh, on six two, on the school committee budget. Have you want to go over that?
I think we were respectful of the dates regarding school committee budget that, uh, it, it is now due on the twenty-eighth of September, um, to be proposed to the town administrator that, uh, on February, what did I say?
September.
February.
Well, you're really early then.
Wow.
You're late then.
Yeah, I am. Um, uh, and it provides the school department to hold public hearings and information to the public, have time to get the governor's budget, which doesn't come out until the end of January and it does allow also some flexibility, uh, in that, uh, should the governor's budget not come out in a timely manner, which it typically does when there's a new governor, they usually let, allow an extra four weeks before that state budget comes out, uh, you know, allows the school committee with the town administrator to negotiate the terms of, uh, proposing a budget.
Again, that, that's where we moved the time, fixed by law, to move it over. Six point three, submission of the budget, budget message. I think this, uh, the changes mainly deal with, with posting and where the budgets appear and what appears in the, in the notices. Show, the notice shall further indicate in items and places which complete copies of the proposed budget, invited message and general summary available for examination by the public and such documents shall also be quoted in the town changes on the town website. And again, this is, we both from the use of the, the town website more and more in
And this is also addressing the issue that came up recently where there's an outage, if you, uh, if this doesn't get done and there is an outage at town meeting, a people, a town meeting to go ahead and act on the budget thing.
And that's where it says, "Failure to post in accordance with requirements of this charter and any act that will apply law shall be in the town meeting shall take up the budget at the adjourned session of the spring town meeting unless action of the first session is approved by seventy-five percent of those present in voting inside this charter." Six point three, budget message. This is just, it's been bridged. There was two sections that, that, that represented the same thing, it was just bridged. Six point four, the budget. We just made a minor change that the budget shall include the two previous, um, years of figures instead of just previous. Six point six, capital improvement, appropriate. That has been changed to six point six, capital plan. It sets some time. A setting of capital plan. And, uh, it should be a capital plan looking at five gives, we all know that things change over time and, and, you know, so that there's an annual review of that plan that may be Again, this is just a renumbering, six one time on the left, four to four, six point seven on the right, a change. Uh, no change where, uh, just, um, seven point one to... Uh, no change where the charges is, uh, seven point one to provisions. Seven point two, seven point three, no changes. Seven three, specific provisions, Dr. Vea, no changes. Seven point four, number agenda, no changes. Seven point seven, definitions, uh, just made some, uh, again, uh, some minor changes. If you look at F, right now, the present charter says local newspaper. And, and things can change, I mean, we have other publications in town. So we just changed to local, changed it from local newspaper to a local publication. And, um, and under definitions, we eliminated the definition of town officer. And used that term wherever it's referred to throughout the charter, instead of having it by definition. It's tied to making people, like, so it could, it could say in the charter wherever, you know, so and so who are this title, this is considered a town officer. One of them. The definitions, uh, one definition was a town officer, another definition was an official. We got so messed up trying to figure out who is what, then we decided, again, eliminating those two definitions and my title including it in that throughout the charter. No matter how many times we go through this charter, we've all done it numerous times, we always find something. And you'll see the old charter, it is, it's miscellous. Probably doesn't advise an open act. Seven point six, rules and regulations. Seven point seven, we're going to review the charter. Seven point eight, removal of suspension. Town meeting two, this is everything that is going over. No, it's, we'll be a few more by by law now. And I think we also wanted to, uh, what, what did, and so has that been brought, the rise that's out.
I have opinions, everybody, you know, it's on the section, like, I don't know, so.
Um, but yes, we, we, the, the committee did, uh, put in the verbiage to, uh, that this process has to come to conclusion, and we just, we left over it. Seven point nine, procedures governing multiple member bodies. Minor changes. We, uh, in seven point nine C, uh, we changed the verbiage of rules and rules of reading minutes. We deleted, uh, forum in its entirety. As it's, it can be different, it's laid out in charter bylaws, if they, you know, from a simple forum to a super majority or, 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 you know, other variations. Unlike the proposed, uh, courtship supposed by the board of selectmen. Fill in vacancies, there, there was some minor, uh, changes, there are minor changes. Seven point three, procedures, you know, G. Minor. We did insert in this section, it says nothing is charged, shall be construed to authorize any individual member of an elected or appointed multiple member body. Or a majority of members of such body to become involved in a day-to-day operation that can be candid administration of any town agency. Including, including supervision of the department head and staff. Rather, day-to-day operations shall be subject to general oversight of the town administrator. And of the respective town officer of the department head. This is the intention of this section to affirmably establish. Establish that such multiple member bodies shall act only through the adoption of bribe policy guidelines. That are to be implemented by officers and employees serving in such body. Seven point ten, notice of vacancies. First, we inserted that section, seven, uh, I'm sorry. Other than minor, minor changes. Seven point eleven, laws of excessive, laws of office of excessive to assets. Yes, it's just procedure for, uh, remove all multiple, uh, members of the body, of the body. We inserted this section, seven point twelve, seven, F twelve, charter enforcement. This is a new section. It should be the duty of the town administrator to see that the provisions in this charter are faithfully followed and complied with all departments, boards, town offices, or employees here in the repressives, town agency, or town employee. Whenever appears to the town administrator that any town agency or town employee is failing to follow any provisions of this charter. The town administrator shall invite you to cause notice to be given to such town agency or town employee directing compliance with the charter. If it shall appear to the board of selectmen that the town administrator personally is not following the provisions of the charter. It shall be by resolution, direct. It shall by resolution, direct the attention of the town administrator to those areas in which they believe there is a failure to comply with charter provisions. Thirdly, fifty or more registered voters shall have the right to petition the town administrator for enforcement of the charter. Said penalty, said petition shall be filed with the town clerk. I shall state the provision or provisions of this charter to mainly enforce. The town clerk shall therewith deliver to the town administrator a copy of said petition with, within one business day of receipt. For such action as the town administrator shall deem appropriate. Nothing in this section shall be deemed to waive any other rights available with law or in equity. Article eight, transitional provisions. Uh, it's just a standard to guide, eight point one, continuation of existing laws. Eight point two, continuation of government. Change. Eight point three, continued, continuation of administrative personnel. Eight point four, transfer of records and property, no changes. Eight point five, um, disposition of special laws, this is, again, a remnant, uh, of going from, uh, representative, uh, to open town meeting. So this has been deleted. And we've replaced it with section eight point five, time taken effect. And that's the last part of the substantive changes where, um, we're talking about the transition from elected to appointed in different sections. So, in, number one, elected to appointed offices as of the effective date of the amendments to the charter. That's a changes. This, uh, section has been amended. And basically, the, it's a minor change that, that changes terminology. To assure that the elected members of these positions hold the protection during their term of, of official office. Uh, so, so we've just changed the verbiage to comply with that. And, uh, I don't think there was any purpose anyway, uh, of wanting to make such a change, it's just that the expiration of their term. We feel that that's a good time, uh, and there will be a few retirements, uh, coming up. So it's a good time to transition, uh, at the termination of their, uh, point, uh, of their term. Uh, and I'll read that. Following the effective date of the amendments to the charter approved at October thirtieth. October thirtieth, two thousand seventeen, special town meeting. The elected incumbent treasurer and town collector shall serve for the remainder of their respective elected terms or soon of resignation or vacating of office. And this is where we need to put the change. Upon termination, uh, upon, um,
Expiration.
Expiration of their, uh, elected position. Or resignation or soon of vacating of office. The elected office shall be abolished and the board of selectmen may immediately appoint a treasurer or town collector in accordance with section three point two D. Upon the effective date of the amendments to the charter approved at the October thirtieth, two thousand seventeen, special town meeting. The elected office of board of assessors shall be abolished when the terms of their remaining members terminated. The board of selectmen may immediately appoint a chief assessor pursuant to section three point two D. And service as an elected assessor. And service as an elected assessor shall not be disqualified for appointment. So that will be changed and presented.
Mr. Chairman, more, this, should, should it reference the special town meeting or would it may now, well?
Please, while you're good, have her come to the mic, because this is going to be on the air. Sorry? Have Lauren come to the mic if she's going to find us, so everybody can hear her, please. You both sit there, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, again. Um, the, um, the changes are going to be approved by the voters at town meeting, but they won't become effective until after the election. But in order to refer to, so that everyone knows what changes we're talking about, it's the changes that are approved by the voters at this town meeting. So I think it's appropriate for it to refer to the town meeting rather than the election.
Okay, so that may be confusing to people. So based on what's, we're, we're telling them that they are, um, their vote at town meeting is to allow these things on the ballot. But this actually says that if they're not in favor of something, they should vote it down. What we're saying is, in order to allow it to go, why should, um, sixty-one people approve the charter changes? Let it go to a ballot vote and that way more people have the right to voice their opinion. So I, I, I think that's a little confusing, maybe confusing to people.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Transitional sections are meant to implement changes contained in the actual body of the charter. They in and of themselves aren't, um, taking effect when it's approved by the voters at town meeting. Nor are any of these other changes going to take effect when approved by the voters at town meeting. The entire vote at the October thirtieth special town meeting will be to decide whether to place the question of these charter amendments on the ballot in May. And if in May the voters approve those changes, then these transitional sections will be triggered and will come into play.
Okay.
They, they do talk about the process for implementing the changes. But we have to at least point to what changes we're talking about. And the changes we're talking about are the changes that the voters at the town meeting are going to look at. Um, and those changes are then going to be voted on, um, at the election. And no matter how we characterize it, if town meeting votes no at, in October, then it will go to the ballot. So it's the changes that the voters are looking at at town meeting that would then be presented to the electorate, um, at the election.
Okay, thank you. Oh, I just don't want people to think that we are misleading them by saying, um, you know, you're not voting to approve at town meeting, you're voting to allow these questions to go on the ballot.
Um, Mr. Chairman, certainly, um, if there is significant concern about that. You know, this language here, approved at the October thirtieth, two thousand seventeen, special town meeting, could say, and thereafter, at the, um, May, annual, May twenty eighteen, if that's possible. Um, annual town election, if, if you wanted to provide that kind of continuity in the, in the transitional section.
Personally, I, I think it's okay, I mean, um, nothing goes into the, into effect until the effective date of the amendments, which will occur after election. And this won't even appear on the ballot if it's not passed at the special town meeting.
And I understand that, Mr. Chairman, I just, I guess, you know, this is being videotaped for broadcast. So if someone is looking at this and they read it and it says, approved at the town meeting. And they look at us and say, well, you're telling us we're not approving anything, you know, this is a vote to allow it to go to the voters. I don't want anyone to think we're misleading them, because we're I don't want anyone to think we're misleading them because we're not. Okay?
Mr. Chairman, and that's why it says as of the effective date of the amendments to be, um, charter approved, because the amendments are going to be voted by town meeting, but they won't be effective until approved at the election. So it's a two-step process.
Thank you for that clarification.
Yeah, we'll be clear on that at town meeting.
Thank you, Lauren.
Two, the reduction size of the committees committee. Following the effective date of the amendments to the charter approved at ten thirty seven special town meeting, committees committee shall be reduced to fifteen members to nine members, as set forth herein. Provided however that such reduction in membership shall not prematurely terminate, terminate any elected or appointed member, but instead shall be counter pushed through attrition. All the members appointed by the board of selectmen, the first and candidate shall not fill, uh, going to propose a change here, um, to remove, um.
Cause by expiration of channels.
The first two vacancies, um.
Shall not, right, shall not be filled in such position, shall thereupon be abolished.
And same thing for the, uh. And then three, the increase in the size of the board health at the next annual town election term, what is, what is called the effective date of the amendments to the charter, moved at the ten thirty sixteen special town meeting, the town board shall move on the ballot. In addition to any board, this needs to change.
Right. This, this has been updated, it needs to be updated.
Yeah. Basically, basically we're changing this section. Initially, we felt the strong need to, uh, increase the board of health and membership. And initially we thought we'd find a more collective board. But upon further discussion and input from, um, different people, we, uh, we felt that it's, uh, best to keep it a three elected and two appointed by the town administrator. To, to make sure that the committee is, is of a good tenure, of, 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 of good, uh, level of professionalism and, uh, so that the appointments will be reviewed in qualification and so on and so on. It goes in hand in hand with what we're trying to do with all these positions and going elected to appointed. Number four, the creation of the water and sewer commission. Again, following the effective date of the amendments to the charter, sue on September seventeenth special town meeting, the board of selectmen shall make appointments to the water and sewer commission. And it could just go on, it just goes on to talk about the appointments, it'll be staggered towards to, uh, equal numbers in each, but it's, uh, in terms of the test and, and thereafter the water. And in the first year following the effective date of this charter, and the selected, this selectmen shall continue the responsibility of setting the water and sewer rates until one year following, uh, the effective date of this amendment, thereafter the water and sewer rates will be set by the water and sewer commission. And what's, section five forty. So that, that's the, uh, the end of the charter. And, uh, let me move back, let's see, I have my back. Does anyone have any questions or comments? This will be?
I'll just say thank you for working so hard on this for as long as you have. And the other committee here is, you don't work it so hard upon it at all.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, it's, it's, uh, it's been quite an experience. We all met quite frequently and, and conversed quite frequently. And we met with department heads and, and other town committees and tried to get as much input from everyone. Uh, we had an email address, some people commented. Uh, we, we discussed the comments and we, we tried to be as open and, um, as fair and, uh, try to do what's best for the town. Thank you. Anybody else? Any other comments? Okay, that being said, I'll, um, end the public hearing and entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.